Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, May 27, 2017. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise. And we will have Daniel Van, Troop 540, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Mario Hatcher, Bellevue Christian Center, 1400 Harville Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for this opportunity to pray for y'all. And so if we could bow our heads. Father, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for your life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. And thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray that for our mayor, for the various levels of our city officials, and in particular for those assembled in council, I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. Finally, I pray, Father, for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live, work, and and around our city of Bellevue. It's in your son's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Hatcher, and thank you to Daniel Van for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number two, Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which is posted, the entry to the council chamber. Item three.
Item three is the approval of the agenda, consent agenda, minutes and advisory committee reports. Item A, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. Second by Mr. Burns. Questions or discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion unless a citizen or a council member requests that they be removed from the agenda and placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. So item one is the approval of minutes of the May 8, 2017, meeting of the city council. Item two, approval of claims. Item three, approve, approval of the reappointment of Kathleen Crawford Rose and Deborah Stortvent to the library advisory board for five-year terms, each ending June 2022. Item four, reappointment of council member Don Preister and the appointment of council member Thomas Burns to the hard surface parking committee. Item five, approval of a permanent storm and detention facility easement for Outlot A, Cedar Grove, replat 1. Item six, approve the request to release a portion of a storm sewer easement located in Lot 8, Lot 30, and Outlot B, Cedar Grove, replat 1. Item seven, approve the request to release a portion of a sanitary sewer easement located in Lots 7 through 10, inclusive and lots, excuse me, Outlots B and C, Cedar Grove, replat 1. And item number eight, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2017 campground host agreement with Jeff Stewart. Madam Mayor and council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, on item number eight, Mr. Jeff Stewart, I just want to thank you, and I'm assuming you'll be getting help with the lady to your right for taking on this responsibility. I think it's huge and a lot of commitment to you and to both of you to do this for the city. So thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or discussions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item five, special presentation. If I could have Mr. Modri and Mr. Cook join me. It's pretty short, Daniel. The city of Bellevue, Nebraska recognizes Daniel Van, Troop Number 540, for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America on March 16, 2017. Congratulations. Does anyone have anything to say?
Nothing other than I'm glad I was able to achieve that rank here today. Well, not here today, but to have a special presentation here because I really enjoyed this city and I really enjoy doing my project here in this city. And I think it's a good thing for all youth of this age to be able to do service and things for the city that they live in because I think it helps build their character and helps teach them a lot of things.
Congratulations. A huge achievement. Congratulations.
It's a real achievement for Daniel. Only about 4% of Boy Scouts achieve the rank of Eagle, the highest rank that can be achieved. Takes a lot of hard work, dedication, commitment by him, as well as a lot of sacrifice and and yes, even sometimes prodding by loving parents and leaders to help a boy make Eagle Scout. As Daniel said, he did his service project here in the city. It was with the Eastern Nebraska Veterans Home. He helped organize and kind of redo their games and books for them, set up electronic inventory for them, got rid of some of the worn out and unused books and such, and brought a number of those to the Bellevue Public Library for them to use, and then in exchange, they gave about 75 large print books to take back over to the veterans home for the veterans to use. So that was a very, very worthy project. And I know your parents, Joe and Trish, are very proud of you as well as we are. So thank you, Daniel.
Item number six, 6A, liquor license.
Item 6A is the approval of the manager application of Melanie Selken for Class C liquor licenses held by Yahweh LLC, doing business as Holiday and Express Hotel and Suites at 10804 South 15th Street.
Is there anyone here to represent this item? See none? I'll go ahead, though, and open up for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the manager application of Melanie Selken for the Class C liquor licenses held by Yahweh LLC, doing business as Holiday and Express Hotel and Suites at 10804 South 15th Street.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting on Items 6A and 6B for religious and personal reasons.
Any other questions or discussion? See none? Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Item B is St. Bernadette Catholic Church, application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during their church festival at St. Bernadette Catholic Church, 7600 South 42nd Street, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, July 8, 2017, and Sunday, July 9, 2017, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Is there anyone here to represent this item? Great. Do you want to state your name and your address as well?
Yes. I'm Andy Flanagan. Address is 4969 Glenmore Circle in Bellevue.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to say about the event? It's your TV moment to promote your event.
Nope, nope, not much, not much different than what we've been doing in the past, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please do so at this time. I see no one. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the church festival at St. Bernadette Catholic Church, 7600 South 42nd Street, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, July 8, 2017, and Sunday, July 9, 2017, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
No, we'll second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Any discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. Eight, ordinance for public hearing, none. Nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, none. Item 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance.
Item A is the public hearing on the event license application of Freedom Running Company to use the Beardmore Event Center area and Keystone Trail on December 2, 2017, from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for a 10K, 5K, and kids' run, known as Frosties Winter Race.
Is there anyone here to represent this item?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Joe Ramos. I'm here to represent the Frosties Winter Race. We were here about a month ago to get our last race approved, which is actually in the process of doing really good. We had to change our name, though, just because there was an issue, so, but we got it taken care of, so now we're Freedom Running Company. I've coordinated with the Beardmore Event Center, and essentially for this race, what we want to do is kind of have it to be a Christmas-themed race and celebration at the same time. We are in talks with the event center on having a type of festival after the race, pancake feed, toy drive, Santa Claus, that kind of stuff. So we just kind of really want to do something fun in the wintertime. In other cities and areas I've lived in, there's always been a winter race where people will get their ugly sweaters on and, you know, Santa jumpsuits and go out and have a good time, even though it's pretty cold. Still, usually, they, a lot of people come out, and then if you're feeding people afterwards, and for, you know, donating to a good charitable cause, a lot of people are interested in coming out to those type of events. So essentially, that's our plan, and we just wanted to see if we can get an approval to use the facilities and the trail.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ramos, one of the questions from the police department was the, at the end of the race, they mentioned that there's no local brewer partner has been identified. I think you were going to provide...
I'm sorry, for the previous race, or for, not for the Santa one, excuse me, the Frosties one, we're going to be coordinating with the Marriott to provide food and beverages. For the race that's coming up in the summer, we are actually in talks with a brewery that just opened up in La Vista, but we have nothing concrete just yet.
Is that for the Frosties?
No, that is not. That is for the, I'm drawing a blank, the beat the heat run that we have coming up in August, on August 12. That's what we were talking about for this one. For the Frosties race, we have no brewer or partnership or anything like that. It's just going to be food and beverages that are going to be provided through the hotel.
No alcohol?
None to my notice at this moment. So I think it's going to be a little early in the morning to start drinking, so.
All right.
In the summertime, yes. In the wintertime, we'll probably just do hot chocolate.
All right. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none? What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Modri.
Yes, I move that we approve the event license application of the Freedom Running Club Company, or Running Company, to use the Beardmore Event Center area and the Keystone Trail on December 2, 2017, from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for a 10K, 5K, and kids' run.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Item 11, resolution none. Item 12, current business.
Item A is the approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement with Sarpy County for solid waste management.
Mr. Burns.
I make a motion that we authorize, approve, ah, I make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Sarpy County for solid waste management.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item B is the approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the amendment to the 2016 Stormwater Management Plan, grant intergovernmental agreement with Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, and to accept additional funds in the amount of $28,427.
Mr. Burns.
I make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the 2016 Stormwater Management Plan, grant intergovernmental agreement with Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, and to accept additional funds in the amount of $28,427.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item C is a request permissioned to move forward with Corether's Construction Company LLC on the design-build contract for the renovations to Casio Swimming Pool, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract in the amount of $2,567,746.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve and move forward, we approve and move forward with Corether's Construction Company LLC on the design-build contract for the renovations to Casio Swimming Pool, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract in the amount of $2,567,746.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Jeff, I stopped by there tonight and talked to a few of the people that were there. A couple gentlemen are here tonight, and it's my understanding is that they're going to, to begin the work, or try to begin the work, on Casio Pool at the end of the swim season with the hope, and I'm sure all probability, we'll have it done for opening of next year so we would not have a closure of that pool during the swimming season next year. Is that correct?
The intention is to have them both open for the beginning of next season, swimming.
Okay. I went down there this afternoon. I stopped by there this weekend, but obviously, no one was there, so I just looked around, and I stopped by there today, talked to three gentlemen. I think the one was James Essex. He was a superintendent, very nice person, gave me about 20 minutes of his time. He walked me out there, and I'm telling you, it is amazing what they're doing. I thought we were going to keep a lot of the footprint and just tear apart of it, and this is going to be a new pool, except the exterior walls to the bathhouse. So we are going to get a new pool. It's not just fixing things and repairing things and replacing things. We're going to get a brand-new pool down at Gilworth, and I believe we're probably going to get a lot of that same for Casio Pool. So I wanted to say thanks to the two gentlemen that are here tonight. I do not recall their names, but it looks like, what I saw today, it looks like the project's moving forward, and I'm very impressed on, and waiting to see how this all comes out once it's done. So thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I asked some questions on this item as well, you know, because the cost was about $651,000 more than Gilbert Pool. I've got some good explanations on the additional work that needs to be done, and it is quite extensive, as Councilman Cook has said, and essentially, really, we're getting, getting a new product at both those pools. So again, thank you.
Any other? See none? Please vote.
Vote is five to one. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D is the approval of the low responsible, responsive responsible bid from Lund Ross Contractors not to exceed $2,186,000 for the 1500 Wall Street building renovation, civil scope addition for relocation of City Hall, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to say a few words on this item?
This is our new City Hall building, so we're looking forward to getting that moving and getting out of this building and going to a brand-new one where everything's going to be nicer and modern and 21st century.
Mr. Sullivan.
As the council is aware, there has been some issues surrounding this bid. The difficulty on this bid is I have to go by what the written material tells me, and the written material tells me that Lund Ross was the low bidder. There were some discussions in regard to Construct Inc. You've got a letter from them, but the form, the bid that they had showed an add to the, to the alternate bid, and the other bid had the alternate item, if you will, included in the full price. So when you look at them on paper, Lund Ross is the low contractor. Now, there was some discussion and contact with Construct Inc. after the bid opening as to what they meant by their bid opening, but it's a little bit difficult because the cat's already out of the bag at that point because we have, the numbers are there, the, they typically have a representative there. So the difficulty was that on the form, there was a box that our contracted engineers put out that had a X in there. There was some discussion about whether that created some confusion. At the end of the day, if it created confusion, a bidder should have gone back to Shimmer, who was, who put the bid documents out to clarify the problem. I can only go by the written documentation, and the written documentation is telling me that Lund Ross is the low bidder. I do think, and I don't know if somebody hears from, hear from either of those companies, but I think we should open it up if they want to speak in regard to that.
Mr. Modri.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we open it up for public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please do so.
Good evening. I'm Don Bastler, president of Construct Incorporated. And I understand there was some confusion. First of all, I'd like to say one thing. I'd like to thank Daniel. Yeah, Daniel must be a good name because when I hired a project manager, my son asked me, he says, well, with his qualifications, he's a young man. Why, why did you really hire him? I went through that he had his degree from UN, you know, University of Nebraska. He actually worked in the construction business. So the final decision was, is he was an Eagle Scout. And three years now, I see his dedication, so it's very important that somebody does appreciate that. I applaud you, Daniel, for your dedication because that shows a stick-to-it attitude. Now, on with the competitive bidding situation. Everybody understands competitive bidding. It's kind of a fair and open way, a transparent way for everybody to look at a bid. Everybody tries to do their best at providing things. Yes, there was a little confusion. Obviously, there was a little confusion in City Hall to begin with because if you look, you're reading the amended part of the city council's approval. Originally, we were to be the low bidder and approved. Then it was amended. Of course, city attorney looked at it, and I can see his questions and considerations. We also had those considerations. Now, I can get back to my project manager, who was in charge of the job. We have what they call a pre-bid meeting, where the architect and all the bidders will assimilate and ask questions. We brought up several questions to Scott Haney with Shimmer Company, and the items discussed on May 4 at 1:30 was about calendar days because there were some issues about calendar days, and Mr. Rogers was there at the meeting also. And this is what my interpretation from my project manager, Jeff Roberts, responded, that the original date has come and gone. We're not interested in that. The contractor must give a project time because I understand there were some problems and other issues where jobs drug out. His response is, he says, I guess the time has already gone to hell, and the contractors are going to be held to fire by naming some days. And I understand that because, you know, usually, you want a job to progress quite quickly. The other question we had was about the liquidated damages, and that's why he explained the liquidated damage would be based on our written-in days that we planned to do the job. The second question was on the bid forms. And as Mr. Sullivan said, the bid form had an alternate marked on it. This truly was not an alternate, which was explained by Scott Haney with Shimmer Companies. It was actually only for a breakout item for materials that were going to go into the building, 1510, with some, and I understand cities have a budget, everybody has a budget, so you push the money to where it should be allocated to. And he said that item is only a breakout item, and that's all we're looking for. You, you have that money into the base bid. The breakout is only for accounting procedure. So we did that. We could have modified our bid form, but we've had some bad experiences at occasion. One, I can remember, I'm not picking on the city of Omaha, but there was a little flupla, and everybody kind of makes errors on certain things. We tried to clarify our bid and was thrown out because the bid was modified. There lies some of the issues that Mr. Sullivan brought up. It says add, deduct, or no change. It was specified by Shimmer Company that it is simply a breakout. There is no adds, deducts, or changes. So we left the bid form completely alone because if you look in the bid documents, the X is already on the add column. We thought about changing it. We says, no, we've been down that road before. We want to, we want to be the low bidder. We want to work with the city of Bellevue. I have the conference attendees and everybody that... I have the conference attendees and everybody that bid the job was at this meeting when all this stuff was explained. Everybody should have known the rules. Obviously, we didn't invite Mr. Sullivan, who's the attorney for the city, to be there so he could understand what it was. And I understand that people are only human. People sometimes make mistakes. This case where Mr. Haney of Shimmer says, "Oops, that was an oops-up." But everybody's here and we were explaining what we actually want. So I'm not sure how the city of Bellevue would like to look at it, but we were the low bid. Not by much. Of course, this business is very competitive anymore. We were low by forty-four hundred dollars. We've done a lot of work with Shimmer, and Shimmer sent an email to my project manager. And it says, "Terry, looks like you guys are low by a whopping..." He said thirty-six hundred. Obviously, he made another flupla he can't add. "Congratulations, and we're looking forward to working with you again. Mike, it looks like we'll be enjoying lunch together." Now, that's kind of collusion, I guess, because Mike is one of his field managers from Shimmer. So I don't know what else to say, except I think that with this bidding system, having a competitive bid situation, having the city look for the best bid, I think we accomplished that. And I'd like to have Mr. Sullivan either contact Shimmer and see what their intent was. Because what I understand the intent was to just give a breakout item. And we did not modify the form any way, shape, or form. If anybody needed to see the bid documents, I'm sure Mr. Sullivan has it, that we were low. The bid days are all different, but they're all similar within reason, just depending on probably a contractor's workload at the time. I've given the city clerk a letter explaining our position. I won't read it to you. I'm sure every one of you can read the document and understand it. I would like to have you rethink your situation and award it to the low bidder. That seems to be the way the competitive system works. And if... The only thing I can say is if you let the competitive situation and the competing competitive bidding process change in any way, shape, or form, it's kind of like messing with a good system that assured everybody a fair and equal chance to bid a job. I thank you.
Thank you. Are there others like to speak on this item? Please do so at this time. See none? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
I'd like to have some better clarification. I'm looking at what we have attached to our agenda. There's an add addition or alternate number one. There's a dollar sign there. I'm not quite following how this all played out. If we first were looking at awarding it to Construct for the two-point-one-eight-one million, then it was changed. Is that seventy-seven thousand four hundred included in it? Two million one hundred eighty-one thousand? Or where was the hang-up? Where was the misunderstanding? And how did we put together one agenda and then change it to the second one? Is what I'm not following.
It is included in the bid. Everything was included in the base bid. It was only a breakout item for the parts that were due in building fifteen-eleven. It was basically an accounting situation. It was all to be in the bid, base bid.
Let me add a couple of things before you answer, Mr. Sullivan, and thank you. So are the other alternate one bids, from the other companies that bid, is there, that all ranges looks like from seventy to eighty thousand, is that in their base bid? Or is that an add-on to the total bid? Because I believe we chart, probably the city of Bellevue created this chart, or the engineer, Mr. Schumer, Schuman, Shimmer. I need some clarification because we originally were approving the one bid and then we changed it. To fully understand, was the alternate one, is that all added into everybody's base bid? And the base bid is the final bid? Or is the total bid the final bid? Because if I understand this gentleman, alter number one is included in his base bid, which would be the lowest bid.
Jeff Roberts is going to have some clarity.
Okay, the way that Shimmer put this together, in our discussion between me and Mr. Haney, was that we wanted to see the numbers with the fifteen-ten building with the UPS and then also the numbers for the fifteen-hundred. The way this sheet is set up that they had to look at was you have three options. You do an add, which means you take your base bid and then you add the alternate to it. The second way it could have been done was you deduct the alternate out of your base bid. So you have a smaller base bid. And then by the time you add your alternate in, then you have your final bid. But in this case, and then with the, with the low bidder, they actually said that base bid will not change. This is the final price. So based on the way it's written, you have to add the alternate onto it. Now, whatever the intent was between the architect and the contractors, I wasn't privy to any of that. But based on the contract or the bid, you add the alternate to the base bid. And so that's how I look at it, and that's how it came... The first recommendation was from Shimmer. And then when I got to looking at the bid documents themselves, that's when I realized that, no, that's not right. Because there is somebody that said that their base bid is, does include the alternate. And they noted it.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Don Basler mentioned that the bid documents that went out to them already had the add Xed on them. Do you know if that is the case, that the bid documents went out that way to the bidders?
From what I could tell, yes, that X was on there, which I had to talk with Mr. Haney and told him that should have never went out that way.
Yeah.
That they should have gave them the three options on how you want to do it. It's an informality. We can waive informalities.
I can see how that would be very confusing to the bidders.
And I understand it too, but again, after the fact, I don't know if that truly was the intent for their low bid. I can't look at it that way. On paper, it doesn't tell me that.
Understand.
Mr. Shannon.
Mr. Roberts, where is the record of the pre-bid meeting? Were there notes taken? Is there a record of this meeting and the instructions they were provided?
We do have that, yes.
Okay. Was the gentleman's representation of that meeting accurate? That they were told that the base bid covered everything and this was just to be a breakout?
I don't know if that conversation was in because at the time I was there, we were outdoors. And I wasn't strictly focusing on listening to what the Shimmer was saying. I had other duties that I was taking care of, opening buildings, getting to where the contractors go around and look at it. So I wasn't a hundred percent involved with the pre-bid meeting.
Do the notes of this meeting reflect the answer to that question?
I would have to go back and look at it. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. I think that's kind of pivotal in how we decide this matter. If these are the instructions that were provided to our bidders at a pre-bid meeting, we need to honor that.
Mr. Cook.
And I'm somewhat in agreement. I'm in agreement with that. I guess my thought is this. You know, nobody submitted a bid after the fact. All the numbers were presented by the deadline, and then Schumer opened everything. And in the minds of Schumer, according to that email he read, and I'm not saying, you know, we probably don't have a copy of that email, probably should get a copy of it. But to me, they're, they see all the numbers and they're making this decision, at least in an email, that, "Hey, congratulations. You're going to win this." I guess my thought is if all these other companies knew that this was an add-on, that they base bid to add-on bid to total bid, none of the numbers are changing. So I'm not quite following why, if Shimmer thought that this was the lowest bid, I don't know why... I guess I need help on why we wouldn't honor that on a, I want to say on a honesty type. You know, they made a bid. It was included in the final. I don't know where the seventy-seven four hundred came from. Maybe it was just you were able to pull that out. But this chart was, I don't know who created this chart that we have on our agenda. But to me, I think we need some better clarification on what the intent was and what they and the other bidders knew. This is a big project. It is a lot of money. I know the difference between the low bidder and number two is a very small amount. But I think we owe it, unless I can get clarification here. I think we need to fully understand that, why was there a change from Shimmer email today? And we even had it on our agenda that another company was going to win it. So we must have thought the same thing, to put it on our agenda for that way. Something occurred, and now we're here today looking at it, the second company. I need better clarification.
I took the recommendation of Shimmer.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to say they probably jumped the gun by even contacting the contractors because usually that comes from my department.
Sure.
So something just didn't sit right with me Thursday. And so when I went back and looked at the instructions and went through to make sure that I was looking at everything accurately, then that's when I made the determination that the only one that really followed the directions was Lund Ross.
Mr. Shannon. I mean, Mr. Sullivan.
A couple of things. You can award a bid today. You can turn down all the bids today and rebid the thing. Those are choices that you have. But when we start talking about what people's intent were, what people may have said at this meeting, who sent me this and did that and so forth, at the end of the day, on a contract, a bidding contract, the bidding contract has to be read from the four corners of that piece of paper and not bring in whose intent was this and that and whatever else. Mr. Basler sounds a very honorable man. I don't know him, but he very well may have wanted to include that in his deal. And he probably did. But we break down the integrity of the bidding process if we're going to say, "What you said in your document was wrong, but we know what your intent was." That's the problem that I have with this. I had two other people in my office look at this and said, "Tell me who won this bid." Both of them came back to me and said Lund Ross won the bid, when you read the document. If you look on that, even though that X is marked on add, it says, "If alternate does not affect the contract sum, the bidder shall indicate no change." That was not done on Contract's contract. There's an X there. I think it was an error that it was there. But there wasn't any reason why that, that could not be followed. And furthermore, if it was inconsistent with what was discussed at the construction meetings, then they should have been on the phone and getting clarity on that. And/or Shimmer should have made a correction and notified everybody on how that bid process was going to be. At this point, all I have is the written paper in front, and I can tell who won the bid from the written documents. If I want to talk about everybody's intent on what they wanted to do, I'll never come to the right conclusion on who won the bid.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The clarification is helpful. It seems like Mr. Roberts is kind of in between because he didn't actually issue the bids. We have an architect, as I understand, Shimmer is, and Shimmer sent the information out. Shimmer checked the X. We have a situation where now we have to make a decision based on somebody else's decision that may not have been the best decision. Of the options we were just given of rebidding everything, that doesn't make any sense at all because now everybody knows all the bids. Everybody's seen everything. So that would be totally unfair. I don't see us going backwards at this point. Mr. Roberts has gone over it and over it and over it, and I think tried to do the oversight that we really needed. But some of it wasn't even within his control. So at this point, it's an awkward decision. I got to ask Mr. Sullivan, is there anything that you see that would get us into litigation? I mean, anything can be litigated, but is this, you've just said that you think that it meets all the criteria. I'm not going to vote for something if I think it's illegal or in some way doesn't comport to the guidelines we have to have for the open bidding process. So I'm asking you, does, in your opinion, your legal opinion, do you say that there's nothing in this that is going to be outside the bounds of our bidding process or illegal?
Sure. Let me answer this. Lawyers are paid to be creative. There's issues that you could raise with this, with this document. I have to go with what I believe most legally conformed to the requirements of the actual bid documents. Not what somebody was told, not what a construction meeting was. And when I read that, Lund Ross is the low bid when you read the contract as a whole. Can I tell you, you're not going to get sued over that? No. But if I was a betting man, I'd go with Lund Ross. Then I would override Lund Ross and go with Construct Inc. based on the written materials. It's the best I can do for you.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Thank you. Are the minutes from the pre-bidders conference available for us? You know, it'd be interesting to see what those minutes have and if there's any kind of disclaimer within those minutes of, you know, the spoken word here means nothing, you know, if it's overcome by what's in the written document, which many times they put in those minutes.
Mr. Shannon.
As a businessman that's bid these processes many, many times, I can tell you that the pre-bid meeting is the rule of law on these bids, and the answers are distributed to all bidders, okay? As this is how we're going to do it going forward in this process. So they are setting out the rules. They are setting out how they want their responses in this. So that is the critical document here. I mean, from Mr. Sullivan's standpoint, I understand what he's saying. The, you know, the four corners theory is solid law. But, you know, if we've given guidance contrary to this, then I'm just not comfortable making a decision on this. I mean, and from a strictly business standpoint, I understand you said that this wouldn't be fair. But if we're the stewards of the city's money, I guarantee you that if we bring the bidders back in, the bids are going down.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. It just seems that, that really the person that put on the meeting, the pre-bid, is Shimmer. And that's the ones that did that, that did that meeting, right?
Correct.
Correct. And you weren't really at that meeting.
I wasn't a hundred percent engaged.
Neither were any of us. So I think it might be a good idea to hold this over and have Shimmer come in and talk to us a little bit about what went on there so we got clarity in who said what to who, and maybe something like that. Even though that it's on paper, you know, where it does show that Lund Ross is the lowest bidder when you take the alternates and add it all in there. But, you know, to be fair to everybody, I think maybe we should do that. Maybe hold it over and have Shimmer or a representative come in and speak to us about this.
Would you like to put that in a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this till the next meeting and request that Shimmer come in and talk to us a little bit about that pre-meeting.
Can the motion be made to continue this rather than table?
Yeah, I meant...
Do we need a date for that?
I think we could probably do that by the next meeting, I'm sure, you know.
Which would be June twelfth?
June twelfth. So to continue this to June twelfth, to have, ask that Shimmer come in and, you know, explain this process to us. Because we could talk here all night on who said what to who, you know.
And we have a second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion, Mr. Modri.
Yes, I would also hope that we could get a copy of minutes from that meeting by that time as well. Yes.
Mr. Preister.
I'm just wondering, is that discussion going to take place before the next meeting? And who's going to be at that? Is our legal, what are we looking at? I would just like some clarity of what the meeting will be, when it will be.
I would suggest that we get the pre-bid minutes as soon as possible, and we'll just filter them out to you guys. But other than that, I think we have Shimmer come to the next meeting and speak and make a decision.
Okay.
That was my intent.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify what that was. Thank you.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve E.
Item E is the approval and authorizing the mayor to sign the updated agreement with Nebraska Medicine for clinical shifts.
Mr. Shannon.
I would move to approve item twelve E.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item F is approval and authorizing the mayor to sign the amendment to the Liberty subdivision agreement.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the Liberty subdivision agreement. to the Liberty subdivision agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion or questions? Mr. Preister.
The more I've been thinking about this, 10 years is a long time to drag this out and we're going to have dirt sitting on an area that we're trying to make a park out of. I'm just, I'm having buyer's remorse. I never agreed to it in the first place, but I just am not sure this is in the city's best interest for that long a time. I mean, five years maybe. We're getting, what, is it 50,000 a year that they're setting aside or 5,000?
5,000 a year.
5,000? Heaven forbid, and I don't think it's going to happen, but if they default, if anything happens, we're stuck with it. I, it's an area we want to make a park from. I like that they're cleaning it up. I, I'm not going back on that. I'm just thinking five year is more appropriate than 10 if we're going to do this, but I don't know what they think of it. And I, maybe we can have Chris Shuchak chime in a little because I think that's his area.
Mr. Shuchak.
Actually, the only reason my name is on here is because we do the subdivision agreements. Yes, please.
I met with the developer and their engineer over this deal because I wasn't too thrilled with it either. They have four stages of development. Usually they're about two years apart. So that's kind of where the, the 10 years came with just a, you know, depending on some lag features. Where they're wanting to put this pile is right next to their own, the homes that they're going to be selling in phase one. Each year, we have a provision in there that we can require them to level it unilaterally. And the area that they have, where they're putting this, is kind of a little bit of a, oh, for lack of a better term, a tag sticking up from where your park area is. It's not down in the, the actual park area. And I think from that standpoint, it seemed like a, a pretty good deal from getting the ditch taken care of that was there. And a little bit of, what do I want to say? Bellevue saying, contractors come and build here, we're willing to work with you and make things happen. And that's kind of where that got to. But we are able to level that each, force them to level that each year or use the funds they're paying us to do it. The contractor estimated about 30 grand for the cost, once it's all done, if somebody had to come in there to clean. That's where the number developed that they would pay us the five grand over time to make it up to 50 grand. And that's, that's where it is. So just so you know how it all broke out.
So the, the leveling would get the pile down completely and we would have control over that annually? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 13, administrator's report. Comments must be limited to the items on the current report. Are there any questions from Mr. Manjamelee or comments? See none. Move on to item number 14, public requests to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city official, employees or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official or employee or member of the general public. And City Code Section 2-68 regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time?
Do you want to say that? I could throw one more little cloud of counsel in, in your minds. If indeed, I looked at the bid forms and if indeed, and our add was not an add, it was just marked that way, we left everything blank. But if it was a no change, why did Lund Ross put in 75,975 dollars in their item? Or was it intended just to be a breakout item only? Just adding to your confusion, gentlemen, sorry.
Maybe just so I, when I read that, it looked to me that regardless of how, whether you're going to add, deduct or no change, you're still supposed to list your breakout.
If you read it, it says alternate one and it just says breakout, total price of work for building 1510, building service room UPS. It doesn't indicate an add, a deduct or a no change. It just says it's the breakout. That's the wording of it. Why he has add, deduct or no change? Everybody gets in a hurry, grab cans, specs, throw things together. We brought it to their attention. It was mentioned at the, like I said, the pre-construction meeting. I guess you'll have to ask Shimmer what went on there to clarify it. But they indicated to us that we knew what we were doing. I don't see how a no change has a number figure in it. If that can confuse you a little bit further. Thank you.
Good evening. I was here the last meeting, two weeks ago, and a couple of things kind of concerned me. One was that in regard to the item being the agenda, I, I looked at Section 2-29 and I don't see how that could have been the agenda. It was not declared as an emergency. I'm not going to read the whole, the whole ordinance, but it is Section 2-29. I'll have it on my website, so you can look at that. I'll have some other things on my website too. But what I was concerned about when Mr. Roca was talking about his situation, he kept on mentioning 3,600 dollars. And I think that he, obviously he was sincere because you let him go ahead and do what he did, but you really broke a, a code, ordinance code that for how sidewalks are built. And I want to thank Mr. Preister and Mr. Shannon for, for voting no on this. And also he, Mr. Shannon mentioned about Pandora's box. If people, if kids or if older people walk on that or my wife thought about women in high heels, if they walk on that and hurt themselves, there's going to be a lawsuit. I, I really think that, that what could have been done, instead of going ahead letting them put in the paved stones, is I would have negotiated with them and see, you know, how much would it take for you to not do that? He wanted, he said he was in 3,600 dollars. That's a lot better giving him 3,600 dollars than putting in a sidewalk than having him put in a, putting in paved sidewalk and then, now, anybody can put one in. And he bragged about how good the paved sidewalk, his, his paving people were, but that doesn't mean everywhere else is going to have the same company. So, and it takes a while for these stones to settle. So I think you're going to have a problem on that. And this, I feel unfortunate that that happened. The other thing is that in regard to the committees, I see you, you created a new committee tonight and I have a list, will be on my website, I have a list of the, I think, 15 committees, the people who are on those, then it went down to 10, it went down to eight committees, the people who are on those, you can see and make conclusions of who's on the committee and, and, and why they were. But I also really concerned about the, the budget committee. That to me is a really important committee and you took it off a committee and I've been around here long enough and on the council to know that the budget situation takes a long time and a lot of times in the past, we haven't had a lot of time, the public, to look at the budget to make a, to make input on it. And it, it looks like a lot of times we get down to the deadline, we got to get it done quick, quick. I am, I'm going to suggest again that Mr. Shannon, who has business experience beyond that budget committee and also Mr. Modri, who had many questions at the last budget question, time, he told me he had only about half of them answered. I think we need those two on there. I still think we should have Mr. Shannon, Mr. Modri on the, on the, on the audit committee too. We, I've talked to Mike Foley, I told you this before way back, and he said the auditor should come down and not, they should come down and do an audit of the state and skip our auditor, which we have for five years, which is way too long. I talked to Charlie Jensen, he's willing to come down and he said that we shouldn't have an auditor for more than one year for a contract. So I was talking, two years, which should be the maximum, but now I'm changing my mind to Charlie Jensen, you should not have an auditor for more than one year. He said, he said his plan will always out there. I just kind of feel that we, we need to look at this financial situation and look at it really carefully because I think I've heard, I could be wrong, but I heard that you're contemplating maybe having a restaurant tax now. And if that's the case, you have, you're hiring somebody to figure out how much you should charge, but yet I keep hearing how good we are financially. If we're so good financially, why do we need a restaurant tax? It doesn't make sense to me. So there's, there's just a lot of questions I have and I certainly would like to have the state auditor come down and do an audit and skip the other auditor for one year. That would make a lot more sense to me. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll close a public request to be heard. Item number 16 is adjournment. Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Have a safe Memorial Day weekend. Good night.